...of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So after the last meeting, Ryan informed me that there's actually something I need to say at the beginning of every meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. If anybody wants any more information, I have that for you to see. All right, first thing off, quotes. I have three very quick ones from some very obscure people. The first one is, "In order to carry a positive action, we must develop here a positive vision." That's from the Dalai Lama. Next one is from Norman Vincent Peale, which is, "Change your thoughts and you change the world." And the last one is from Buddha. What we think, we become. All right, first item on the agenda is public session. Any public session, any public comment? Moving right along. Next is an update from the superintendent on the T-Ticket School.
Thank you so much. We are off to a good start. Firstly, let me just say that the transition from the T-Ticket School to both the East Falmouth Elementary School and the Morse Pond School, the transition has gone remarkably well. So my updates in terms of T-Ticket itself, both Patrick Murphy and I meet weekly with the contractors over at the T-Ticket School about the abatement and cleaning that's going on, so that we're kept up to date. We have also identified teaching supplies that can be, after they're cleaned, can be removed from the T-Ticket School and sent over to teachers. Dr. Pinsons is talking with her teachers to identify any supplies that they need, and if they don't have them, we make sure that we get them to them. And what we did just recently was, we really went over to take a look at materials that perhaps we could discard because the cleaning process is so intricate. You know, you have to wipe every surface of every single thing, and so taking a look at things that we perhaps can discard instead of going through the cleaning. And I can just give you an example that really sticks out to me. There's a box of Legos, and the box of Legos, every single surface of every single Lego had to be wiped. And so thinking about the cost of having, I think it was either three or four people do that or replacing the Legos, and I chose to replace the Legos. So it's very, very intense, the whole process that they're going through, and we're taking a very close look at all of those pieces. So we expect to have an update on the overall schedule, A, our progress, and B, sort of projecting that schedule forward of all facets of this project, obviously, including the abatement and cleaning, the ceiling tile installation, and the completion of the UNIVENT project, and the general classroom setup, hopefully towards the end of the next week, and I should be able to give you a more specific timeline moving forward. Right now, the two-month window that we carved out still seems to be appropriate and adequate. We continue to work with the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Labor Standards. Patrick and I also met with Representative David Vier this week. As you know, this is my, sort of my first go-around dealing with state agencies, and I just wanted some guidance on that, so I did call David Vier. And we will continue weekly to do superintendent's updates on our website so that we can keep the public informed.
Great.
On that note, I would like to show just a video. So you've heard about the transition, now I'd like you to see a little bit of the transition. That's good. It'll just take a minute to warm up.
I was amazed at how well the first few days of school have gone. The kids have been amazing, the teachers have been great, everybody's been so flexible and so willing to just go with everything. Things went like clockwork. We were so prepared, and things went better than I could have anticipated that they would. The buses came in, everybody was in their stations, everybody was out there greeting them, the children as they came in, and the parents have been wonderful, the community's been wonderful. As you know, Stuffaboss and every other fundraiser that we had gave us the supplies we needed to start off. The classrooms looked fabulous. Everything has been just wonderful. The transition has been as smooth or even better than I could have expected it to have been. Discovered that we needed to move to a new place, we were allowed to teach together in our new digs here at the East Falmouth School. And as you can see, our classroom is now a gym. We had a lot of fun setting everything up this year. Mrs. Boudreaux and I have worked together for a long time, so we somewhat knew how to help each other to make, put things together.
Well, when I initially got the phone call, I think I panicked. And then when I heard that, you know, Skylar would be at a middle school, I think I panicked more. And I didn't tell her anything until I knew when the meeting would be and I had more information, because I didn't want her to be nervous. I wanted her to be able to have all of her questions answered. And I went to the meeting with a list of probably 20 questions, and they answered all, I think, but one of them without me even having to ask a single one. The plan was well thought out, it was very detailed, they thought of all of the parents' concerns ahead of time and had all of those answers ready for us. So I left that meeting feeling really impressed with the district. They had all of the stakeholders present, every principal in the district present, which I think was really impressive and just shows what a wonderful district we have overall. And, you know, the only concern I did have was with recess, thinking my second grader being at recess with fifth grade would be a challenge. And on the first day of school, I got a letter home that said she'd be having recess alone. So even the one concern I had, they addressed before it even became a concern. So I just, I love Falmouth, I think it's a fantastic district, I'm proud to have both of my children here. And both of them have transitioned exceptionally well, and everybody has been so welcoming to everyone.
Well, I thought I was going to not know where my classroom is, and I'm going to be left out and get lost in the school. Well, I looked, and all my teachers were, like, Ms. Cheeklin was there, and my friends were from last year was there too.
Looking forward to going back to the T-Ticket building, though? In the future?
Not really that much, because I like this venue.
Questions for Nancy? Susan?
When can we expect to hear from the town and train in regards to going forward as to liability and how we can be helped? Because this was a town project, ESTO project.
I would suggest that's a much longer conversation that requires the state agencies to weigh in first.
Okay.
And that would, I think, form the town's response also. That's my sense of it.
It's important to know, though, it's important for the school committee to know that we have met with town heads.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we have kept both our town manager and town council up to speed and what's going on. Thank you.
Other questions?
Just, one thing that I noticed in the video was, and it might be a procedural thing, we might have to vote for this to approve it, I know Millie the Dog, we approved to go to T-Ticket, but I see now she's at East Falmouth, so we might have to put a vote to approve Millie the Dog for being at East Falmouth.
The school policy allows her.
It does allow her.
The one you did vote for.
Right, it's not specified to a particular school.
Correct.
But that's a good question.
For lack of a better term, I want to make sure that Millie was like a legal big with you all.
You were leading to a choice.
And then, just a suggestion for a book that I was remiss in not suggesting earlier for the kids with transitioning is a great book, Who Moved My Cheese? We're dealing with challenges and changes in life and everything.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any other questions? I don't have a question, I just want to again compliment you and the staff and the teachers and the parents and the principals and everybody else that has made this phenomenal. I went to the, to the community meeting, and I was just so impressed with the time and patience that you took to, as the parents said, just answer every question that was there. It was, good job. Keep it up, keep it up.
Thank you, and that really speaks to the team and the teachers and the principals, you're right, and the entire community. I think it's reflective of Falmouth, certainly, and Falmouth's investments in our kids.
Absolutely.
Alan, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to speak on behalf of being a parent at East. I was there the first week, and I thought everything went smoothly. I thought the buses went great, I thought parent drop-off and pickup, I thought considering the parking situation that we already have at baseline is going better than expected. Word on the street, if you will, from some small people I know, everyone loves everybody. The East Falmouth School, PTO, had a joint picnic last Friday with the, there was a principal challenge obstacle blow-up chorus that we were able to keep through the evening. Smitty's Ice Cream was there. I think it's really, we're trying, you know, the mesh seems to be going well, and I, everybody seems to be excited to meet new friends, and, no, the kids don't seem to be in any rush to move on. I know that everybody else is, but the kids seem to be really excited and seems to be going well. So again, I want to echo what Alan said. I too was at the community meeting, and questions were answered before they could even be asked. I applaud you all for taking the time and not leaving any stone unturned for any of the students or parents or all three of the schools that are affected.
Thank you.
Go.
The five Ps of life, proper preparation prevents poor performance. And take that to the bank. Your leadership qualities, the organization, everybody's involvement. In the back of my mind, I always knew the kids would be fine because kids are resilient. It was parents' questions, community questions, concerns by professionals, but once you get the kids in the right direction, you've got them, you've got them. And right now, based on that, based on your communication with everybody, the indebtedness of everything that everybody's done on your team, including teachers, principals, the whole nine yards, just a spectacular job, and I'm sure these kids will be more than happy to go back to T-Ticket. But it's also been a great experience to mix with other kids. Again, kudos, great job.
It's been a great adventure.
It's a great adventure.
They really are.
They're having fun with it, so thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on. Unfortunately, Theodore is not here, so we're going to skip the report from the student advisory. Next is act on surplus foreign language texts.
Yes, in your packet, you will see, I believe it's the first chart, is the foreign language texts that are in very poor condition and out of date, and we would like you to act on them and on the recommendation that they be considered surplus.
Can I get a motion to declare these four sets of books surplus?
I'll make a motion.
I got a second.
A second?
Any discussion?
Where do they go?
Thank you.
Where do the books go?
So in this case, because their condition is so poor, they will likely be recycled. No vendor will take them, and they're not really suitable for us to donate, which previous ones we had donated.
Okay, thanks.
I have a request, could I get one of the Latin one ones?
Ooh.
I'm serious.
I'm sure you are. Going to get Latin another go around to kill you, huh? Any further discussion on this?
Not, not about, I have a question about the, how we go about doing this, because I know that this came, usually came through the curriculum group. Is that still how it's going to do, how that's going to be happening, or is it just going to come directly to the school committee?
I believe last year, right, the curriculum subcommittee, we had looked at a longer list.
Yeah.
That is a good question.
Okay.
I don't have any answers.
During that first meeting of the curriculum instruction.
We can discuss this.
Yes, okay.
Further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion to declare these four texts surplus? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is passed. Then you have another whole group here of social studies, math, and science texts.
Yes, and these are from the Morse Pond School, and you can look at their dates, their condition, and then the reason they're to be declared surplus is that they're no longer used in curriculum.
Can I get a motion to declare these six sets of texts surplus, please?
I'll make a motion.
I need a second.
A second again?
Any discussion?
Where do these go? Because they're just worn, they're not poor or, poor.
Well, similar to Sonya's, the publishers won't take them back, obviously. A lot of the science books are no longer as accurate as the textbooks that can be purchased now, so will likely be recycled.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment, I would think that any kind of effort to try to sell it to another district or something, even if they were okay, would probably spend so much time and cost that it wouldn't make sense anymore. Just a comment.
Can I comment too?
Of course.
I think, in thinking about where these books would be used, would maybe be another country, so there might be a partnership with, like, a school in Guatemala or a school somewhere where they might use books like this. It would need to be a school where it's in English, obviously, but that might be a way that we could explore a partnership with another school doing that. And maybe somebody already has a partnership with other schools.
Haven't we done that before? We've sent some supplies, yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of declaring these six sets of texts surplus, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is presentation by Nancy Ashworth on the Mullen Hall walking track presentation.
Good day.
Hi Nancy.
I think you each have a summary of the walking track proposal, and we're fortunate to be, to have some donations being offered to Mullen Hall, so I'm here to give you the information about what is being offered and to hopefully have approval to move forward with this important project. Cape Cod Aggregates is donating reclaimed asphalt. A&amp;A Paving is donating their time and equipment. And then our town departments, DPW, Engineering, and Highway are all contributing, and we're looking to do this, hopefully, in the week of April vacation. And there's a list, four line items, that explains in detail how the town departments would contribute, so I wanted to present this proposal to the school committee.
Nancy, where does the track go?
The front field.
So it's going to rim the front field?
Correct. We have three aerial shots of configurations that were considered, and that was, we began exploring this maybe a year and a half, two years ago, and thought was giving to, you know, dig safe and water pipes and things like that, so.
Great.
Nice question.
Sure.
What will be the distance?
We're hoping, perfect world, that we want the number of laps to equal a mile, so I think we're looking at six right now.
Okay.
And then the other important consideration is maintenance of the middle of the track for football and soccer for kids during recess time.
Other questions?
I guess I'm wondering whether or not it's being planned to continue use of the carousel.
Yes, there, in the configurations, there's a lot of space out in that front field.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, John?
Also, is there any component of it for, like, hydroseeding, the grass or whatnot?
That, it's just busy.
Okay, yeah.
It's just busy. We have looked at a couple of worn spots that, you know, we try to keep up, and we thought about even paving them and putting in like a four-square, but we can't because of sewage and water. It's just a really well-used playground, yeah.
Fair enough. So given the proximity of Mullen Hall to town, having us there, I'm going to expect that there'll be demand in the summer and on the weekends for people to use it their own.
I think.
There's no real fencing at Mullen Hall to keep people away, so I assume this is, that will be fine?
It partners with our playground. There's a lot of access, a lot of visitors there.
Absolutely.
The parking lot is filled every summer, today. So I think adults will enjoy it, and kids will enjoy it during the summer. Maybe kids are playing on the playground, adults are walking laps, and vice versa, maybe.
Great.
Well, Alan, interesting you say that, because I think with the amount of traffic that it gets, because it started the season off, that if some component, I know that the playground, I mean, the carousel folks are generous to do the rides for the kids and whatnot, but if some component of maintaining that grass could be deferred to them or the town, even if it's going to be a million people walking back and forth right over there all summer long, that they start off, you're kind of behind the eight ball right off the bat, just a thought.
We do get monies from the carousel. I don't know if we've ever targeted those monies for use, but.
I don't believe so.
So it might be a good, as John's saying, it might be a good kind of recycling, you know, everything going back into that.
Right, okay. Nice offer.
Any other questions for Nancy? So you need our approval in terms of moving forward with this, I take it?
Right, just understanding the amount of the donations and the contributions from the town, I think it's just appropriate in protocol to bring this to school committee.
So what are we, so what do we need to do? We need to accept the donations?
Accept the donations.
We have, accept the donations from, so can I get a motion to accept the donations from Cape Cod Aggregates, A&amp;A Paving, and the town of Falmouth to construct the Mullen Hall walking track?
A motion to approve that?
Can I get a second?
A second.
Great. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Wonderful project.
Thank you very much.
Sounds awesome.
Our thanks to everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, the next two items are presentation of the large school dugout and scoreboard, and the acceptance of a $50,000 grant from the Falmouth Road Race. We're going to hold those to a later meeting. So next, moving on down the agenda, next item is the review of the enrollment and class size statistics.
So in your packet, you have a chart that has our enrollment as of 9/8. And I will just, as I noted in my briefing, we, you know, this chart changes over the first couple of weeks of school. We have students who add in, we track down students who may not have shown up, and they may have moved, so those numbers will shift a little bit, but I just thought I would bring that to your attention and give you an update. And just remember that the official enrollment form is filed with the state on October 1st, so we will update you again. I want to make one correction. Down, if you look under FHS, it says 893, and then it says 37 out-of-district OOD. That number is actually 42. It says 37, but there are actually 42 students out of district head students right now. And sometimes when they're in transition or if programs are changing, Power School may not accurately reflect that. So we actually went back and we looked at the out-of-district chart that we kept and that we continue to keep, and that number's 42.
Is that constant from last year, or is that an increase?
Actually, it's, it's a decrease, and it's been a decrease over the past three years. It's been a nice sort of downward trend as we go capacity and we go further.
How is, a quick look seems to be that our kindergarten registration is down a little bit from last year, if I'm comparing the kindergarten numbers to the first, first grade numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? Do you know if that's a trend in other districts? Because I have seen other districts where this is a trend, so.
So are you seeing it?
Yes, I don't have many districts that I'm comparing it to right now, but it has been a trend with other districts that I've seen. Yes.
When you say other districts, are you just, the islands?
Islands, Capes districts. I don't know about the Cape districts.
Okay.
I really know about.
The thought is that, I think it's a blip for Falmouth.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting it would be a, sort of a permanent trend. I think, just go back five years and there's probably a reason.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking the economy.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And so I'm thinking that there might be a trend that we're seeing throughout the United States, actually, but Massachusetts, yep.
It's hard to know. I mean, I, you know, I always look at this, in this case, the sixth grade number, because the blip is there, so.
Right. Well, we wouldn't know, because other districts are on the same deadline with filing with the state that we are, so in October, we might know. Everybody else is in the same boat, but we don't know, we wouldn't know yet, I would imagine.
No.
So we bring, we bring a lot of kids in kindergarten through school choice, if I'm correct in that. And do we?
It's not a huge number, I don't have the exact number, but we do. That is when we see the bulk of kids coming.
And do we have, do we have a sense on the school choice kids that came in as kindergartens? Have they remained as first graders?
So that, I don't have that with me, I wasn't prepared for that, but I will, I can easily get that, because that's what we do in track.
Right, great, thank you.
So I can do that.
So for follow-up information, it would be really interesting to see what the K-enrollment was last year moving forward, and then maybe present the numbers of students who didn't stay.
And we have that.
Great.
And we have the reasons why they didn't stay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on the school enrollments? Conducting routine business, first is the approval of the minutes from 8:23.
And there's a revised one, right?
Yes.
Here.
There's a revised one in which Kelly did not vote?
I thought it was pretty amazing that you were.
I voted for Pennsylvania, it was very fancy. I was watching, I just didn't vote.
That was Melissa that voted, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments, additions, corrections on the minutes from 8:23?
A comment? Okay, with regards to the Yom Kippur section, in an effort to facilitate a good meeting day that, for all, I voted yes for adjusting the meeting date for that secular reason. I do think the committee is showing inconsistencies with labeling dates for official school events for one religion, but on other dates which were traditionally off for secular reasoning since many students, teachers, et cetera, would be, wouldn't be able to show up. For informational purposes, with label as Good Friday, the committee, with the exception of me, and the exception of Bill, who was not on that committee, voted to remove the name of Good Friday. I just want to note at this time, and I encourage citizens to email me with their feedback on the matter, as I fully intend, when we have the calendar committee, when we meet, to have the name Good Friday reinstated on the calendar for 2017. I strongly feel that the unanimous vote which stands in the minutes from August 23rd as titled, "A Changed School Committee Date, October 11, 2016 Due to Yom Kippur," mandates that a similar unanimous vote should occur for my future motion to call the date we have off on April 14, 2017 as Good Friday. That's my comment.
Can I make a comment on the minutes?
Of course.
Okay, I, so I don't see Melissa on here.
Who just saw it. Yeah.
So I think she voted. I think her vote was what?
I was here, and I voted. It was Mr. Mortimer.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August 23rd as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
None abstaining.
Kelly abstains. Okay? Next on the agenda is the superintendent's briefing.
Just a couple of things I'd like to highlight very quickly. We talked about enrollment. My central office team, with input from the instructional leadership team, is going back to look at the strategic plan. I think it's moving forward to keep that strategic plan alive. It needs to be sort of our guide for the work that we do. So the central office team has been working on a progress update for you, and we, based on our progress, we are amending the goals and the action steps moving forward to better reflect some identified needs in the district, particularly around the community partnership pillar of that plan. So we'll be working on that and presenting it to you in the future. I did put copies of the PowerPoint that we used at the community meeting in your packet, just as a reference point if people weren't there. It was very, very successful. And again, it really does speak to the town and community of Falmouth. The stuff of us was incredibly successful, and that was sponsored by First Student, and the T-Ticket PTO helped out with that. And then there was another event on September 3rd, Touch a Truck, that was sponsored by community members, and a truck pulled up and unloaded additional supplies. So the amount, the outpouring from the community has been really overwhelming, and we're very, very grateful. We did have convocation. We had a guest speaker, Dr. Shanti Johnson, and that went well. Also, that day on the 31st, I just want you to know that the Falmouth Educators Association failed to ratify the educator evaluation system. So we're going back to relook at some pieces of that. And then the last piece, just real quickly, is we're going to expand, and I believe it's in your packet, the elementary school police liaison officer program. It's a little bit different from the liaison officer, what their role is at the secondary level. This is more of a community partnership, and I just gave you a draft of what that looks like or the proposal. And I'll be meeting with my admin council team next week to review that, but we're excited about that.
Questions for Nancy? Susan?
Any additional cost in regards to with this liaison program?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any other questions for Nancy?
Can I make a comment on this? I just think that this is a really great idea to build that partnership with the police, starting early with our young kids, and that, you know, as thinking about ways to really prevent addiction and really focusing on our opioid issues, I think this is a really nice preventative way of really knowing that the police are there to help in many ways and that, you know, starting early is a good way. So, thank you.
Targeting the elementary schools as a program.
Yeah. Great. Thanks.
Other questions for Nancy? Thank you. Questions for Sonia in terms of, Sonia, do you have anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
Just that we had a great first day of professional development, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Sonia? Thank you. Zach, anything that you'd like to highlight from your report?
Nothing specifically, but certainly I'd be happy to answer any questions that community members have.
Questions for Zach? Thank you. Charles, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
I think it's all there. All I would say with regard to the Calmer Choice program, I referenced the parent forum. That actually was held last night. Nancy Ashworth actually was there, Walter was there as well, with about 30 parents, and it was very, very successful.
Great.
I have a question for Charlie. Will you be having the Calmer Choice in years to come, or is this a one-time thing?
The goal is, first of all, the funding from the tower is a three-year funding.
Right.
But the goal is to build the capacity, and we're working with Calmer Choice, so that teachers are trained and that we'll be able to maintain it internally.
Right. I mean, were you going to have another Calmer Choice informational session for parents in the next two years?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question about it too.
Kelly?
So, the third and fourth grade were added this year. Is it still fifth and sixth, too?
Well, that is a little different, because the fifth grade, that was begun with a grant that was given by the teacher herself, who did that. So what we're trying to do with them, and it's a little different because they're outside of this component of the program, is building the capacity that way. So she's trying to identify, and they're trying to identify some teachers who would like to go through that training, and that's kind of a separate track. So the goal would be to maintain the sustainability. How we go about doing that as they're moving along, we're trying to figure out based on the need. What was very encouraging is, as part of the grant, the Calmer Choice folk are offering, I forgot exactly what they call it, but it's sort of like a Calmer Choice program for the adults, and particularly for staff. And they made a presentation at each of the elementary, the four elementary school, day-one faculty meetings on the teacher day of school. They had over 100 adults sign up saying, yes, we're interested, and they gave a variety of kind of times, either after school once a week or at night, and right now they're trying to kind of sort that out. So what we're hoping is going to happen this year, as more and more teachers and staff begin to experience this, we're going to be able to really move on that momentum and be able to identify more staff members who wish to kind of be trained so that we can move this forward.
So all the fifth grade didn't have it last year? I thought they did.
Yes, but once again, the funding source was different. It was through, it was through the teacher, and it was not as part of-
So the staff were not trained?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm done.
I just want to put in my opinion that I think it's really, really important for this to be done with fidelity. So I, you know, having a fifth grader who went through this last year, there were some really, really positive things for her in having that program. But I would love to see, and I really appreciate the Tower Foundation does those three years, because it allows you to be able to see that trend and have the fidelity and the sustainability within that. But I, it's hard if a program like this starts and then, so we don't see the positive benefits of it, especially with, I think, again, as far as preventative ways, this is, this is what we want to be doing. These are the positive ways that we can really help children know how to handle issues as they come. So just keep on trying. I'd love to see like a plant, like a long-term plan for this, so we can really feel comfortable with bringing this into our schools.
Yeah, especially because we don't want to just set these kids up, two years of this, and third and fourth, and then they get to more spontaneity habit, and that's when they really need it.
And that's why it's going to be key that we've identified real staff cheerleaders for this, because that sustainability has to come from within. Right now, they're experiencing it themselves with the trainers, so to speak, to come in, the facilitators coming in, but the sustainability will be from within. So I was very encouraged when I saw the list of 100 staff saying, yes, I want to experience this too. And we're trying to try to accommodate as many as we can at the times they're requested.
I just want to step back to something you said. I think it is really important, because what we're trying to do is offer some really healthy coping mechanisms for some of our younger students, so that they don't have to engage in maladaptive behaviors to deal with that kind of stress.
So the fifth grade last year was done by a grant through fidelity?
No, 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 I'm sorry, not fidelity. No, I think, I'm not sure where the fidelity piece came. It was done privately, actually, I think it might have been through the Falmouth-
I think it was the professional partnership.
I think it was. It might have been. But that was secured by a teacher herself, who sought that.
Okay.
And I think it was FEF.
That was a one-year, fifth-grade grant, or-
Correct. Yes.
So now Tower's coming in and taking care of third and fourth?
All of third and fourth.
So then fifth, then we'd be up to our staff.
Well, there, exactly. And part of what that teacher was doing was working with them. I think she was identifying another staff member as well. And they were participating in the training program, kind of the train-the-trainer program. So that track is being pursued.
Okay. Thank you. I need some clarification.
Yep.
Other questions for Charles? Thank you. Cindy, anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
No, I will take questions from any of you.
Any questions for Cindy?
I just have a comment that, you know, in thinking about the change of venue for so many teachers and so many students, you know, a lot of times we don't necessarily think of all of those technology aspects to giving these teachers access and the students access. So I really appreciate, you know, the behind-the-scenes of everything that's going on, too, because those are things that aren't necessarily known or seen. So, thank you.
Several things have had to be sort of moved down our lists as we're going through the T-Ticket piece. So that's a big one for us. And I asked when Cindy and I and the team met, she had to do some reprioritizing to help bring us through this. So I appreciate her efforts.
Any other questions for Cindy? Patrick, do you have anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
You know, the one thing I forgot in the report was just to thank the Lawrence Project Committee. We're winding down that project over the next four to six weeks, and at some point, we'll do an update on that. But it was, it's a successful project in good part because of that project committee.
Great.
And they look so nice.
John, just a question, Patrick, and I know it's early to say this, because we're still not finished, but am I reading this correctly? It looks like we're coming under budget on the Lawrence School.
Yes, it's a nice project. Yes.
I understand.
And I don't want to go without noting, you had all your hires under the local budget done by the start of school?
It's, unless I miss somebody. There are-
This is a classroom somewhere.
No, it was a classroom. It definitely wouldn't have been a classroom position. But just the way schools work, there's always something, there's always positions going up. So if you see positions up there, we're always looking for folks, either, you know, subs, those types of things. And the processes have been working pretty well that we've changed over the last two years.
Well, this is the second year you've used School Spring, right?
Yeah.
And I mean, it's not, I remember there's been a number of years where we started school with numerous open positions.
Yeah, okay. So compared to what a previous experience was, yeah, I think we are doing better.
Any questions for Patrick? All right. Report from the chair. So I have a couple of things. I saw an article in the online version of the Mashpee Enterprise that titled "Mashpee School Start Time Information Schedule". So right next door, they are having information sessions, actually starting tomorrow night. Advisory Exploration Group aims to communicate to school officials and the public the impact later school start times would have on the Mashpee High School, Middle School, and the Towns Two Elementary Schools. I asked Sharon to make a call over there today and get any information that they have and to share that. So we'll certainly be watching closely on that. I noticed at the end, they say, "A possible vote on changing school start times will be made at the school committee's January meeting." That's according to the interim superintendent there. John, did you have-
I just wonder what time that started?
The-
The Mashpee meeting?
When they're-
When, the date, the day and the time?
Like tomorrow night?
So tomorrow, in case something-
So according to this article, they're having information tables at each school's open house, and the Quashton Elementary School's open house is tomorrow night.
Okay.
And then there's one on September 22nd at the Middle School, High School, and one on the 29th at the Coombs Elementary School.
Cool. Thank you.
And along the same lines, the school start times task force is meeting Thursday to take our next step. Did I see a hand out there? So that's number one. Number two that I have is, I don't know if anybody went to or watched the selectmen's meeting last night, but the selectmen voted to, I think their language was, to affirm the selection of site number three, which is the site north of, north of the tennis courts, the field, the present field hockey field for the senior center. I guess the next step is that they, according to the Enterprise today, there will be two articles in front of town, meeting one to allocate the monies for the field replacement. So it's the same, from what I've figured out, instead of moving the, instead of putting it on where the soccer fields are and moving the soccer field, they're going to want to put it on where the field hockey fields are and moving the field hockey fields. It's the exact same quote, according to their, to their report. So that will be on the, for town meeting in November, as well as the item for the design of the senior center. That's all I know. I got no more information. Happy to take questions, but I don't have any more information.
I have a question relative to that for either Nancy or Patrick, because I know we've talked about the long-term plan of putting the football fields and other baseball fields out by the high school. Is there a master layout plan for that, so they'll decide where to put the revised field hockey field that would fit into the hole, or if there isn't, should we have one?
So the, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So the site that was, that has been suggested to be the new football field up at the high school?
I don't know if there's been one that's been selected or not, for the football field?
When, when, when they, how do I put this? When the item, when the issue was up before to build the all-purpose field, that was cited at the high school.
Oh, it was. Okay.
And so that area is not where they want to relocate or where they want to build.
Okay, that is, and is there one for the baseball field out there, too?
I hadn't heard plans, I hadn't heard any plans to move the baseball field up to the high school.
No.
I had always heard that the baseball field would stay down at, behind the Canty, right?
Well, I would just comment, ideally, I mean, most public schools, their fields are on the same area as the school itself, which makes it easier for the players to go in and out and change rather than have to be transported. I just didn't know if there was some kind of master plan or master layout that we wanted to look at long-term for that, and where the revised field hockey field would fit into that.
The spot, the spot that they're thinking of relocating the field hockey field to, well, actually, they have identified two, and they're both wooded areas at the moment.
Yeah. Well, I think most of, in any place they put it, we would, we're going to break it out.
But I've never seen any plans to put the baseball field up at the high school. Everything I've always seen is leaving it down at Fuller Field.
Okay. Well, I just thought, then should there be one underwood out there to have all in the same area of the school?
Any other questions? I've got no answers, but any other questions? All right. Reports from committee members. Any reports from committee members? Leah?
So I have, first thing to report is that the FEF, the Falm- So I have, first thing to report is that the FEF, the Falmouth Education Foundation showcase is on October 4th, and that is when we have rescheduled our meeting for. So I'm putting it out there as to a possible reschedule of our reschedule meeting, knowing what a great event that is. I believe it starts at 5:30. I think it's at the Falmouth Public Library this-
It is.
-year. So I'm just, I'm putting it out for all of us to, to think about. It is an important piece for us to be there and support all of these great FEF grants that have been available to our teachers, so.
Do you have a suggestion you'd like to make as to a different date?
Can I make a suggestion before your suggestion?
Sure.
So FEF starts at 5:30, doesn't it? Could we start our meeting at seven instead of moving it?
So it goes 5:30 to, I believe, nine o'clock. I think it's a-
It goes pretty late.
Oh, right.
It's a long event and you go around and it's like, it's a whole night.
I forgot.
It's not, there's not a-
Isn't there a reception first?
Prior, yeah.
Where they're doing something first and then across the street.
Right.
Across the street.
Are you going to throw out some dates or?
No, I'm looking to you.
Okay. Well-
I mean, there's nothing that, nothing that says school committee meetings need to be on Tuesdays.
Yeah, is it, would it be possible to do that Wednesday?
Wednesday is, well, the original school committee meeting was the 11th. The reason why we rescheduled it is that the 11th is the first, well, it is Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur is a one-day holiday that would end at sundown on the 12th. I don't know when sundown is.
Sundown is, I think it was before seven o'clock today, which is crazy. I think it was the start of, well, that sunset, not sundown.
Sunset.
What about Wednesday, October 5th?
I personally cannot do that. I have a East Falmouth PTO board meeting that night.
I can't do the Wednesday. I could do the Monday though.
Monday, the 10th is-
Monday is Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
Yep.
Yeah.
FEF starts at 6:30 in the library, if that helps.
Oh, it's at 6:30, 5:30 is the rest of-
Right.
Five to 6:30 is reception, 6:30 is sort of that, Tommy.
Thank you.
Can we have a-
But it does go on for-
Correct.
So we're not going to be able to do both a school committee meeting and go to the FEF-
No.
-event on the same night, so.
So what about Wednes, wait, Wednesday, October 5th? No, how about Monday, October 3rd?
I can't come that night. But you know, I don't think we're going to get everyone. We just need enough people to have a meeting.
And I just want to caution that those nights are also assigned to schools and a lot of my administrators do anticipate. So I just, if, if we were to change the night in terms of it not being a Tuesday, I, I would not expect my directors to-
Can you do a five o'clock meeting on that night or something like that?
Yeah, could we have bridge, could we make it that it ends at by six?
Six thirty or?
Five to six thirty, we'll show up late. I mean, I, I, I know it's an important event and I do think that there are people that would like to be there. I'm just hesitant about rescheduling our meeting. I mean, I know that, that whatever date or time we reschedule it for, we're not going to all be here, so maybe some people will just be at FEF instead.
And looking at what we have scheduled, it's, it's not a short meeting. We have secondary school improvement plans, report on spring testing, report on start-time surveys, and preliminary timelines and F-17 budget priorities scheduled for that night.
Wow. Can I see that schedule?
Of course.
There's a couple of things I think we're going to move, we're going to do earlier. For example, Sonya, Zach and I have talked about moving this report on the spring testing back to the 27th because that also coincides with the date that all of that information goes public. And so we wanted you to have it at the same time.
Great.
I can certainly rearrange a couple of these things if that, if that helps at all. Certainly, I can also move the secondary school improvement plans back to the 27th if that helps.
Well, I, I vote to keep it on that day at five o'clock if it's possible and that, since that, since you guys already rescheduled that. One thing I do want to acknowledge though is that FEF really makes a point of not having that during, on our meetings. So it just happened that we rescheduled, so.
We didn't know. We don't have the information.
I don't know if this was covered, but had anyone said, I'm, I'm able to do earlier in that day too as well. I don't know if anybody's able to do 4:30 or something on that day or if that was a roadblock to anybody, but if not, we'd just start on the, on the day that Leah's talking about too.
I would, I would appreciate that. I, I actually think it's important that I, I started the reception quite frankly. Maybe if, FEF is very, very generous to our teachers and administrators and I, that's a hard one.
I could even do four if, if anybody else, I mean-
So Nancy, you want to be at the reception at 5:30 or?
I, you know, I, I would like to make an appearance at the, at the reception at some point and then go on to-
So if we can get you there by six?
That would, that's okay with me.
So we can, we can do the school committee meeting at four. We can look at moving some of the items that we had scheduled for the fourth to another date and hopefully move the meeting along quickly.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock on the fourth, everybody?
Yeah, I would ask that we take public comment at the end of the meeting just because people are at work. No one would, maybe we can do it twice that meeting.
I will have to be at work too. I'll come at five.
Sharon, could you just check?
I'll just be coming later.
Before I commit to four o'clock.
No, I didn't. I, I can't, I can't do a four o'clock start.
I can't be here at four either. I'll be late, but I, I'll do my best.
Yes, but I will be here for part of it.
All right. So can I get a motion to move the start time of the October 4th school committee meeting to four o'clock?
I motion to move the start time of the October 4th school committee meeting to 4:00 PM.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Okay. Any other reports from committee members?
Can I still go with my report?
You can continue.
Okay. So I'm going to throw out a date for a possible retreat date?
You going to come?
What?
You going to come?
I'm going to come. Yes, this is a day that I actually can be here at four o'clock. September 28th, four to eight. I know that's like super soon, but-
September 28th.
How's that looking for people?
Looks good to me.
I'd rather do it at five. I can do it that night. I'd rather do it at five.
Okay.
I can't do the Wednesday.
My schedule is set in stone yet, so I can commit right now, but I can't, like it-
But you can't do that night, John?
I can't do that night, no.
Okay.
I basically-
So the retreat is something we're looking for 100% attendance on, so that doesn't work.
Okay.
We'll keep that in.
I'll keep on trying. It might be next year, but I'll just keep on trying.
I'm going to suggest that you put together a doodle poll.
I know, I didn't wear a class, but-
Well, you didn't get the results you wanted, but-
But it's worth it. You're really lucky.
Okay, so I have another, so I'll, I'll work on that on the side, but another piece is the evaluation subcommittee meeting. I'd like to propose some dates for that.
Yeah, roll.
Yeah, I know. I know.
You going to go to those meetings?
So, yes, yes. Tuesday, hey, I just had a summer. So Tuesday, September 20th or Monday, September 26th? I have some options right now.
The 26th is meet the teacher night?
Could I ask that we go into October?
Okay.
I, I'm going to need a little bit of time, twofold. One is to catch up on stuff, like I said, that's been pushed aside. And two is, is to prepare for a meeting. That, that's a really tight turnaround for me.
Do you want to look at some dates that work for you?
Yeah, and do tell me some, just like night of the week that would work and then I can throw some dates out.
Can I ask that you guys take this offline?
Yes, yeah.
Sure.
And I just want to say what I'd like to see on that agenda would be determining the dates so that we would determine the dates for all of the evaluation pieces this year and reaffirm our goal for what we want this year as the evaluation subcommittee and then review your self-assessment, Nancy, and support you in that piece.
And you'll create that agenda?
I'll create it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other reports from committee members? Susan?
I attended my first volunteers in public school board meeting hosted by Mullen Hall School. I just wanted to pass on the information that they are having as one of their fundraisers, a golf tournament on a week from Monday.
And that's open to anybody?
I-
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So if people want information about it, they should-
Call the VIP's office.
Okay. Anything else?
September 19th.
I'm sorry.
On the fourth, for Pass the Country Show.
Okay.
Okay.
It's coming Monday. I said a week from Monday. It's just coming Monday.
Okay. Other reports from committee members? There was a couple of things that members wanted to highlight. Kelly and Melissa?
I just wanted to announce a date that's not until November, but I just wanted to mention it now anyway. The Regional Substance Abuse Council is hosting a summit for parents on preventing substance abuse, Sunday, November 20th. There is not a Pats game during the day. It's from 12 to 3:30 at the Cape Codder and it's about how to talk to your child about substance abuse and other tough subjects, under, building resiliency and understanding the adolescent brain. It sounds like it's going to be a really, really good Sunday afternoon before the game.
November 20th?
November 20th, 12 to 3:30.
Do they have flyers or anything that we could?
I have the flyer. I can send it.
Could you send that to student services and we could last?
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Send it around to us, too, please.
Sure will.
Great. Melissa, you wanted to highlight something?
I wanted to mention the Wings for Falmouth Families Wing-a-thon is this Saturday, September 17th from four to seven at the Silver Shore Shanty. 100% of the proceeds are going towards the Wings for Falmouth Families. There's a few adult spots available, but they are looking for 15 or more in the nine to 12 age group and the 13 to 16 age group. And it sounds like a whole lot of fun. It's super easy. You can go online to wingsforfalmouth.org and sign up. It's like two clicks. I tried it this afternoon. It's really easy. And they just need to know if you're going to go so they can order the proper amount of wings. And the shanty is not accepting any of the, any prices or anything, like everything, 100% is going towards the Wings for Falmouth Family and they're also having a 50/50 raffle.
Excellent. Okay. Any requests for follow-up information? John?
I just have a comment for the folks that are at home. I want to thank these t-shirts that we got and just to explain what they are, it's, maybe I could defer to Nancy, but I think it's a great idea and I'll defer to you to explain it.
These are, yours say Morse Ticket and I believe it was Principal Tim McLaughlin who put those together and ordered them through our kids and staff. And many of the students were welcomed by faculty members wearing them as they came to school on the first day. Mine is a little bit different. It says T-Ticket and on the back it says Tough. And the T-Ticket School also produced these.
It's great.
So thank you for pointing that out.
Every student that, at Morse Pond, Morse Ticket wore these shirts last Friday.
Last Friday. It was great.
My son was very proud to wear his. Any other, anything else? Go ahead.
So I, possible agenda item for future is looking at homework for elementary level. I'd really like to explore that for our K4 schools.
Should that, should that come out of the curriculum subcommittee perhaps as a recommendation to us first?
I think that would be great, yeah. And I'm going to be doing some research on that, so I'd be very happy to share information.
And I have one, sorry.
Good.
I know, it looked like we were going to end like 25 minutes ago and now it just keeps going. So at the meeting at the high school about T-Ticket, someone made a comment that stuck with me and they said, you know, I know you would answer any question, but there are a lot of people that are not comfortable standing up in a room with 100 people and a microphone on TV. And so it made me think about our, even though there's not 100 of us, it's still on TV and there's a microphone and that a lot of people, especially non-native English speakers, might be very uncomfortable with that. So I'd like us to look at other ways for people to offer comments and feedback and-
I'm trying to remember, Cindy helped with the technology piece.
It's the email on the website.
Oh, not just about that though. I, it just, that's just what is, what prompted me thinking about our forum for people to bring issues and concerns to us and whether or not it's accessible to everyone. Because I know you set up an email for people to, to send comments, but I'd just like to, to think about it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anything else?